Yes.
Although we do have fairly wide ranging authority over the water courses in the district, our main function for decades has been the removal of flow restrictions along our portions of the water channels. This usually involves the removal of log jams and high water events that come against bridges in our district. We use a few pieces of heavy equipment, a lot of ingenuity, chains, cables, and winching equipment to do our job along several specialty pieces built by the way Mr. Phil Schmidt. We try to spend our funds locally, bank with the Holstead Bank, buy our fuel from a local co-op, buy our tires from Holstead Tire, buy our insurance from Mr. Charleston across the street, buy our supplies as much as we can from the local business. Although our work is of a part-time nature and is highly weather dependent, try to source any help we need from the local workforce. We're not a large outfit. Holstead is our home, always has been, and would like to remain so. Many of you are aware, Phil Schmidt was a long-serving dedicated employee and president of Holstead. Sometime in the past in last August, he was tearblown at us personally, as Phil's friend, board of directors, and the operations of the district. We've had to work through a number of challenges due to that, but I am pleased to say we have rallied and we've overcome most of the challenges. Been a month since Phil's passing, we were back in the field on the river doing the job expected of us by our tax payers. Dedicated efforts in sand and camp here declared a very large log jam against the 48th Street Bridge south of east of town. Two smaller ones, one on the Sixth Street Bridge east of town, and one on the First Street Bridge northwest of town. However, we still have a challenge, the needs from Phil's passing. We were unable to buy at auction Phil Schmidt's old building on traditional way of quarters. Nor could we afford or have afforded to do the immediate refurbishment that it takes to meet our needs. Couldn't justify the high cost to our taxpayer bills. Now we need a building, building we can store our supplies and equipment, hopefully one we can maintain and repair that equipment, perhaps build some new equipment or store any future acquisitions. We need a building which can serve as our headquarters for our operations and our administrative duties. That's why we're here before you deny it. We are interested in acquiring a small parcel of land, amounting to about an acre from the subdivision of Holstead Industrial Park. Would like to put a building up on that parcel, housing shop bay on heavy concrete, parts pool room on concrete, on working space, meeting space, office, like have a bathroom too. Part of this building would be gravel floor, open sided machinery storage spaces, crew up storage. Eventually, we need to move ahead and overhead voice and shop there. Here he is important to us too. We've endured repeated accidents within our foot and field, but we're thinking a chain link fence might be a good future. For the first few years of this project, we would have yearly planned projects with budgeted costs, moving this property. Our proposed building would be on a prepared pad, would be post-framed, metal skin, would have an insulated shop bay, parts room, office, and bathroom, total roof insulation. Would have an open side facing east or south. All height would be about 14 feet or more. It would be supplied with gas, heat, and shop bay, the addition of AC, and then bathroom and office. And to have LED lighting throughout. Would like to have about one year to get a basic building up. We have immediate need for storage of our supplies and equipment. They're currently spread all over some private property and it hurts the efficiency of our operations. By the end of 2021, we feel we could have the open sided machinery storage portion completed, completed with funds unencumbered on hand. Shop bay, working space, the office, and bathroom will come in the next year too. We plan to pursue added funding for these improvements from grants if possible, but we also have the ability to make budget adjustments each year as well. That's our brief proposal. We came before you to knock because we wanted to express official interest in the subdivision of the industrial park. If I entertain any questions, you may ask.
Ethan, is this one of the discussions we had last meeting about subdividing down to smaller portions?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And we have no problem with that already.
Yeah, no, you guys voted last meeting to pursue that, so we are in the process of getting that into a smaller tract and visited with the LAR leadership team several times before that, so just thought it was good for them to come and tell you kind of what their plans were to.
Could we request that we be put on the next city hall meeting on the agenda so we can give them more thorough proposals?
I couldn't hear what you're talking about.
We request to be put on the next agenda for the next city hall meeting so we can actually present our proposals to the city since we're trying to do a land acquisition here for a state entity.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Very good.
I think we're on board with having a smaller segment of lots that are out there, so it's, we were made to understand you were considering subdivision of the larger lot and we had opened discussion with the limber. We're quite interested in having a lot filled building, kind of put us in alert, but like I say, we couldn't justify buying that building. The access was not good for heavy machinery, you know, went unloaded D seven cat in the middle of Second Street and.
We would prefer you pull it into your driveway over there in industrial park.
And really, the building was actually a bit large for us. I'd like to just take a moment if you don't mind to commend Brian Brothers for his purging and understanding, working with Bill Bryant, who are planning on refurbishing the building and keep it up. Really pleased to see that building has stayed a part of Holstead's architecture for the line. You just think that's what it's going to be.
I agree. We do understand what you guys are looking for and we'll do everything we can as a city to help with this project. Phil Schmidt was a personal friend of mine as well, and his loss is great to the community. So yeah, I'll make sure that we get you, if you guys can be ready in two weeks, we can put you on the agenda for the next meeting. I don't think getting you the ground is going to be an issue. I think we can make sure that happens.
Excellent, thank you Mayor. Like I say, you guys are an unseen asset to Harvey County community and be sure, I know I speak for many people, appreciate what you all do out there.
We appreciate hearing that. We do some pretty hard work out.
I know you do.
You guys have picked up some pretty big trees out of that river, didn't you?
We had a pretty rough year last year. It wasn't just because of Phil, it was largely because of Phil, but there was a lot of work that got done before Phil's passing. We had an unusual occurrence on the south end of Harvey County West Park. We had a giant ash tree that crossed the whole river on a supposedly open span bridge, grand usual occurrence. Those two names was a bit harder. We'd like to expand some of our operations, but as you probably are aware, our budget for this year was set in the middle of last year, and we were denied being able to do that back. So be conservative this year, but just want to come up with a building, replace the pay to me at quarters.
Absolutely. Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely, you know, I own two houses with two brand new basements here in town, so I'm glad you guys do what you do.
Give us a little break, we are ready.
It's kind of an unseen, it's kind of an unseen.
Yeah, we'd like to get you on the agenda for that full presentation. That will give the public an opportunity to join and see what you guys are doing too and, and you know, I can't think of anybody in this town that wouldn't be behind your efforts, so.
Thank you. Thank you as a board of council.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to address the council on public forum this Looks like we're losing most of our audience, so that tells me they were all on, on that team together. So we'll close the public forum and I'm going to move on to the consent agenda and ask for its approval at this time.
Mr. Mayor, after review of the consent agenda for January 11th, I will make a motion for approval. Second.
You've heard the motion in second.
Just overall, uh, due to the insurance market, um, we've of course saw, um, almost a fourteen percent increase in our annual cost from what we were anticipating to that, um. And that was mostly driven by our increase in values of the city property, um, that was, that is being insured, um, additional mobile equipment, um, things we didn't have originally when we, uh, started with them and then vehicles as well of just trading out old vehicles for new. Uh, obviously it's, it costs more to insure those newer vehicles, so that's really what's driving our major costs. I did put that our last quoted cost from EMC, um, and the supplemental carriers we would have to have for what EMC wouldn't cover was ninety-nine thousand four sixty-eight, so we do believe K-Camp is still, um, our best, uh, cost option, uh, for current coverage. On that and would seek approval to pay the invoice to continue our coverage with them.
Did that premium increase, I mean, did you see individual premiums like for the new loader, was that a significant increase?
Compared to what, the old one, yeah, just because it's, the new one's valued so much higher and with depreciation.
It's a double edged sword, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Yes, um, this is still below what we built into the budget, um, for it, uh, K-Camp is really good about, um, I, I was impressed of, in June, they actually sent us, even before they had met and made their final decisions as a board, uh, kind of what their staff was expecting for increases, which was very nice on the insurance side. It's not really something we saw through EMC all that much, um, beings that they're more specialized in government, they kind of understand the process. And we're very transparent of, hey, we think it's gonna go up, please be prepared when you're doing your budget, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if I remember from the presentation that we had many discussions over this, there was some form of year-end rebates for money that wasn't.
Um, we did receive a grant, um, of two thousand dollars for risk mitigation activities that we do. Um, so we applied that to a camera system, a body cam and vehicle system that we bought for the police department, and that covered about half of that cost, um, and so. And then when we, we, as we were a new, um, eventually we'll hit the process where they actually have some kind of, if you, um, do a multi-year, like agree for three years, um, it can help your rates. But since we were a brand-new client, we don't qualify for that yet, but.
But we are seeing some payback in other areas that traditionally you wouldn't see from a normal insurance company, so.
Yeah.
Heard the motion and second to renew our insurance with K-Camp, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign and that motion passes. Next item is consideration of after-prom funding request. I don't see anybody representing the high school here.
This is, uh, an annual donation and we can definitely call them forward, uh, and ask them to come.
I think if you want money, you should show up in person.
But, uh, there is the, uh, letter there as far as consideration, um, and it is something that the city historically has, has funded more years than not. Um, and we noted the donation we typically do, so I will leave that up to you all if you want to make that decision this evening or pen. We can gladly communicate with the after-prom committee and ask someone to come and present.
I agree.
Okay.
We need a motion to continue this.
He can just put it on the agenda for the next meeting. All right, we'll move on to item number four, consideration of public hearing date for tax abatement review.
Uh, we, slight change, um, as you'll notice from the agenda memo. Normally we do our, um, tax abatement review for active, uh, tax abatements in the city at our second meeting in January. Uh, we were contacted by Leg Company, uh, they've had some staffing changes in the department that handles that. Um, and so through that change, they, uh, weren't able to get us the information in time, asked for an extension. Um, we told them that we would get back with them tomorrow of, of whether that. We do believe, uh, after speaking with Brad, that we have the right, uh, you know, if you all agree to it by a majority vote to deviate from our policy, uh, which states that we'll do a review by January thirty-first of every year. Um, this would put it in conjunction with our February eighth meeting, um, so still early in the year, still time for us to communicate with the county, um, and make sure that we have all those documents. We have two active tax abatements, so we would also be in, um, contact. We have heard back from Martin Machine, um, and let them know if, give them some time to respond as well on anything they might be missing and what they've presented so far, so.
So we just need that motion to deviate from it?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to deviate from the normal requirements of the city's economic development policy and to set a public hearing for review of, of active tax abatements on February eighth, two, twenty-twenty-one at seven P.M.
Heard the motion and second, uh, to move our public hearing for tax abatements to February eighth, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We will move that review to then. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the League of Kansas Municipalities twenty-twenty-one Statement of Municipal Policy.
Uh, thank you, um, hopefully you all had a chance to review. It's a, it's a little bit of light reading for you all, the, uh, Statement of Municipal Policy. Um, this is something the league develops just of their overall, um, advocacy, uh, that they do with the, uh, Kansas Legislature on behalf of cities. Um, obviously they represent all, um, six hundred-plus cities in the state of Kansas, so as you read through there, there's probably some things that are very applicable to us and some things that are not. Um, but by us adopting, um, support of this, uh, gives me the clearance to be able to provide testimony when it's called for. Um, there are some bills already on the table, or if you've listened to some of our representatives talk, you know, some of the items like tax transparency and things that we're gonna be following very closely because those have direct implications on us or our responsibilities. So, um, this just gives staff the, uh, the coverage they need if, if we need to provide testimony or, or statements that support that, um, kind of allows us to, to do that. And you guys know that you as a governing body are okay with those stated policies and initiatives that the league would like to pursue.
Um, there's no questions or discussion, I'd make a motion for the city of Polstead to support the League of Kansas Municipalities, uh, twenty-twenty-one Statement of Municipal Policy and authorize the staff to engage in activities related to the support of those policies.
Heard the motion and second to adopt the, uh, League of Kansas Municipalities twenty-twenty-one policy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, that one passes unanimously, and you see I shortened that up when I was, you know, reviewing that vote. Next thing on our agenda is, we do have an executive session this season, this evening, so I would entertain that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion, City Council recessed into executive session for fifteen minutes to discuss the performance of the city of Halsted in the way pursuant to personnel matters of non-elected personnel, exception KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen V one. To conclude, governing body, city manager, city attorney, open meeting to resume at seven fifty. Second.
Got the motion and the second to move into executive session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We will move to executive session.
Yeah, it was one of the ones that came in the photo submission for Facebook.
Oh, really? It's amazing.
We are back from our executive session, is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we will move on to reports. Tonight we will start with governing body, and I will start with you, Ed.
I think I know what the flags are for, Ethan. AT&T is rolling and allowing in money or something.
AT&T is, uh, from what we can tell, AT&T is laying, uh, fiber optic to some of their customers are increasing their base.
Permits or anything?
Uh, they pull one calls, but with our franchise agreement with them, um, beyond the one call or permitting, um, for that. I mean, to make sure they're not hit, running afoul of any other users in the right-of-way. Um, so we got the one call and we go out and mark our utilities and, um, but beyond that, we don't have like control of the contractor or.
Background, I, I saw these stakes up when I kept asking, what are these stakes for? I don't know. There's only a couple of, um, um, people posting on Facebook about the digging in the yards, I'm wondering what that is for.
George?
Yes, I had, um, Citizen reach out to me and, uh, express, um, thanks for the city maintenance crew to come back out and they did some excavating for the water beater, and then they came back in and backfilled it, and there was settling, significant settling. And when she came home, it was all filled in with, actually the, the dump, um, the tractor was still there, the loader was still there with the bucket and, and apparently somebody else had reached out and so maintenance going around and was filling in, backfilling some of this subsidence that was going on. So, just thank you to the maintenance group.
Mr. Wallace?
I'm good.
I don't really have anything this evening, other than I'm excited to see a new home going up, uh, west of my little home on, uh, Second Street, so. It'll be fun to keep driving down Second Street and watching that construction come together. So we'll move on to our manager report, and that would be you, Ethan.
Thank you. Uh, departmental activity, um, for the beginning of the year includes twenty-six calls for service, twenty-two traffic stops and ten criminal cases for the police department. Uh, fire reported nine calls for service and staff have finished school inspections and are working on various grant applications. EMS has had twenty-five calls for service, uh, two-thirds of those in Halsted and a third in Sedgwick. Uh, staff is currently seeking quotes on replacement of the EMS command vehicle and then evaluating potential operational and equipment changes in light of staffing levels. Uh, EMS also continues to oversee our, uh, ultraviolet disinfection of city facilities as our policies dictate. Parks and Recreation continue to coordinate with. then evaluating potential operational and equipment changes in light of staffing levels. Uh, EMS also continues to oversee our, uh, ultraviolet disinfection of city facilities as our policies dictate. Parks and Recreation continue to coordinate with USD four forty on how their level of response to COVID might affect recreation activities in their buildings. Uh, planning for the pool and needed equipment or maintenance is also underway for this coming pool season. Staff coordinated with the tree board on their winter plantings, uh, and have also worked on trash and debris cleanup at the city parks, uh, specifically Riverside Park. Wedgewood Golf continues winter maintenance and service of equipment. Uh, off-season rates continue to be in effect and staff have been busy scheduling tournaments and registering both new and returning memberships for play at the course. Uh, Public Works has worked on taking down street Christmas decorations, uh, picked up around fifteen Christmas trees, uh, that were put curbside, performed equipment service and maintenance and checked unresponsive and zero read meters as we continue the AMI process. Uh, burial and exhumation was performed at the cemetery and tree removal was done along the levee on the west end of the north side. Administrative staff have been very busy with the utility billing process, uh, continuing to investigate errors as they are identified and then working with Public Works and our vendor to identify the root cause of those issues. We have appreciated everyone's patience with the delays in billing and believe the majority of the issues that were causing delays have been rectified as we move forward. The bills that would have been mailed out December first were sent out about three weeks late and the bills that would, uh, have been mailed out at the beginning of January were sent out a week late. Um, all late fees and charges have been waived until January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Uh, the bills that people, or the bills that people do have, uh, reflect the change from the old to the new system as well as actual usage being reconciled against the previous months which were estimated usage. Uh, again, this will result in some people seeing slightly lower bills if their usage had been, uh, overestimated and does not indicate that meters are in some way running backwards. And in other people's cases, their bills may be slightly higher if their previous month's usage was underestimated. Any resident with issues should contact City Hall and we'll gladly look into their specific account details and readings to make sure there's not some sort of error that's being missed. Uh, utility bills are also billed in arrears, uh, so just a reminder that this most recent billing is going to reflect, uh, you know, the change into cold weather and people, uh, generally have increased gas consumption which can also lead to a higher than, uh, expected bill from the last couple of months. Uh, with any new technology, there are always going to be growing pains in a learning curve, uh, so just please contact us if you have questions on your bill. Uh, we, and we're very hopeful that the outstanding issues have been fixed and bills will be sent on, out on time in February. Uh, just, yeah, the majority of the system is working as we expected, but there are some just outstanding issues that we continue to, uh, hunt down and investigate as they're identified, so just please, please, please contact us if you have a question or think, uh, something is incorrect on your utility bill, so. All city staff beyond that have been busy with year-end closing and finalization of yearly reporting requirements respective to their departments. Staff continue working on implementation of the new VoIP phone system and resolving issues as seen tonight with the council and conference room upgrades as we, uh, continue to work through those new tech upgrades. Uh, just to have attended some meetings and have a meeting this week on, uh, reviewing floodplain changes in our area and, um, that is all I have to report this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, a brief update on two oh four main, uh, did get ahold of the structural engineer, he is coming out to do, um, basically just to check on some of the measurements and things, uh, this Thursday at eleven thirty and then hopefully we'll have that report, um, in hand for next council meeting, so. Yeah, Russ is coming Thursday at eleven thirty, so they, uh, just wanted to double-check a few of his numbers and, and have a final look through it and then he thought he would have that wrapped up, so very, very hopeful we'll have something to start moving forward on some course of action for that building, so.
Council, any questions of that report? If not, that finishes our agenda this evening and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
Heard the motion and the second for adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign, we are adjourned, thank you council.